Back together again.
Yes, here we are. That went pretty quick, getting off and getting back on. So that was a good thing.
And I let the firefighters know that we're back on.
Yeah, I did a practice with them on Monday because they were concerned, like I mentioned to you the other day, about...
Yes, looks like we have everybody here. John is not here. He was in the other meeting.
Seven, we've got seven, Kevin's eight, there's an Andre, where there's... I'm just, I'm not sure if John's here.
He was in the other meeting, so...
Yeah, he's a dial-in, so I think we're good.
Okay, so with that, I'd like to call this regular town council meeting to order. Roxanne, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Davis?
Yes, or here?
Mr. Dombrowski?
Here.
Mrs. Engel?
Here.
Mr. Malone?
Here.
Mr. Marshall? Mrs. McGrattan?
Here.
Mr. Sebelia?
Here.
Mr. Song?
Here.
Mr. Washington?
Here.
Eight here, one absent.
Now I'd like to turn this over to Chief Seccone. Thank you for coming. This is our first group presentation.
What shall we do, this side or this side?
Um, that side, that's good.
You look good from both sides, Chief.
Thank you. Good evening, Town Council, and thanks for this opportunity to have an award ceremony tonight for some town alleged firefighters and a couple of volunteers as well. So we're going to read a scenario of what happened. We're going to get a distinguished service medal for the lifesaving measures would happen on August 3rd of this year. And then there'll be a medal presentation, and then that'll be about it. So we're really proud of these four gentlemen. It's not quite, not that often that we can give out awards, especially medals, but the reactions that they, I think, warrant it, Chief Mann and myself discussed, and we think it's appropriate. So I'm going to read the letter once of the scenario. Deputy Chief Todd Page will also be Todd Page.
Willis.
Todd Willis, Chief Willis, will also be presenting the medals tonight as well. So a citation of a distinguished service medal. Ledger Fire Company and Gales Ferry Fire Company believe in the recognition of the town career and volunteer firefighters. Their actions, outstanding efforts to the community and their federal responders. In keeping with tradition, the fire companies recognize Lieutenant Brian Peppin, firefighter Cody Eisen, Joe Study, and Chris Perrietti for their outstanding efforts that occurred on August of this year. The scenario: On August 3rd, 2020, 3:30, 2:00 p.m., Ledger Fire Company was dispatched to a residence on Stardust Wharf for an 81-year-old male who had gone up in the attic, and his wife now could not raise his attention, and she was concerned for him. After he peried, she called 911 because she couldn't enter the attic. Upon arrival, the firefighter team led by Lieutenant Brian Peppin, along with firefighter Cody Eisen, entered the attic through a small ceiling access panel. The man was located several feet away from the attic access, face down in the insulation. Working in a confined area, rescuers made their way to the elderly man to assess his condition. The summertime weather had brought the, and the afternoon temperatures of the day had dangerously raised the temperature of the attic to almost 150 degrees. Recognizing the severity of the medical condition and emergency, and the confronting of a difficult task ahead to rescue the gentleman from the confined space, lifesaving medical care was immediately established, and Lieutenant Brian Peppin immediately requested additional resources. Gales Ferry Fire Company was dispatched at this time. The firefighter team coordinated rescue efforts, making sound tactical decisions, signing a paramedic, staffed ambulance to eventually transport the patient, as well as a second ambulance to provide care in the event that a rescue themselves would have a medical condition due to the extreme heat of the attic. As additional firefighters arrived on the scene, the team formulated an evacuation plan of the elderly gentleman in the attic. To further prevent any injuries from the gentleman, a rescue basket was brought to the attic, and a rope rescue system was attached. Firefighters remained at the injured man's side in the extreme heat during the entire time, providing medical care, while the others assisted in rigging a rescue rope to get the gentleman out of the attic. At that time, firefighter Joe Study and Chris Perrietti, working efficiently as a team, quickly established the rescue system needed to remove the patient. After almost a full hour in the attic, in unbearable heat and temperatures, the patient was placed in a rescue basket, removed from the tight quarters from the attic, and lowered to safety, and the gentleman was turned over to American Ambulance for Transport to the hospital. Placing themselves in extreme difficult and dangerous elevated attic temperature situation to rescue a gentleman was a complex rescue, all while providing uninterrupted lifesaving aid to the patient and theirselves as well, if had been needed. These actions of the members while maintaining the highest tradition of the fire service that they deserve special recognition and distinguished service award. This is given this day, 28th of October, 2020, Chief John Mann and Chief Anthony Seccone. Now the medal presentation. And Chief Todd Willis will be doing the presentation. You see me okay? Town alleged this distinguished service medal is awarded to Lieutenant Brian Peppin for the successful effort in saving another human life performed in the highest level of professionalism during a medical emergency dated August 3rd, 2020. Signed by Ledger Fire Chief John Mann, Gales Ferry Fire Chief Anthony Seccone, Mayor Fred Allen III, Town Council Chairwoman Lynn Davis. So, want me to read the whole? Okay, so this is firefighter Cody Eisen. Firefighter Chris Perretti. And firefighter Joe Study. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Can't hear us applaud, can't hear me. We would love to be able to shake your hand and hope we can do that in the future. Thank you very much. This is really the highlight of our meeting, so we really appreciate you being here. And again, this is our first group presentation, and we're happy it was you. Thank you for your patience, and we hope to see you soon. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, well done.
Okay. Next items, are there any residents and property owners wish to speak at this time? Mr. Chair?
I almost hate to after the length of the meeting, but I think it's appropriate as we get within a week of the upcoming election that we recognize the work that's been done by the registrars, the town clerk, the town committees, all under the leadership of the mayor and the town council. Tremendous job in this time of COVID, and I personally just want to say thank you. And I know their nights are long, their days are long, and they're under a lot of pressure, so job well done.
Thank you, Mike. Any other, any other property owners, residents wish to speak at this time? Hearing none. Are there any committee, commission board reports? Comments of town councillors? Mayor McGrattan, Mary McGrattan. I'll always call you Mayor McGrattan, my friend. Whoops, you're going to have to unmute yourself. There you go. Nope.
Hold on, Mary, we can't hear you.
You're still muted, Mary.
Okay, it's good now.
Okay. Okay. The Southeastern Connecticut Regional Resources Recovery Authority is having a hazardous household, household hazardous waste collection day on Saturday, November the 7th, which is a week from this Saturday, at the Ledgerd Middle School in Gales Ferry. Just an FYI.
Thank you. Any other comments from town councillors? We're all tired. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of October 14.
So move, Councilor Dombrowski.
Second, Councilor Ingalls.
Any corrections, additions? Roxanne, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Sebelia?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Malone?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries. You have your communications. We have quite a few because of the town meeting, and I'd like to again thank Roxanne for getting those up so quick. I know she was doing that all day as they were coming in. She had to keep updating the agenda to add them, so thank you for that. Liaison reports. Admin, any report?
We had a special meeting earlier this evening, and we have appointments on the council agenda.
Thank you. That means you've been meeting since afternoon, right?
It seems like it.
Community relations.
We had a meeting we held on the 21st. We had the pleasure of having Police Chief Rich, John Rich there. What we decided is, for the most part, that we would be having an informational meeting on November 18th. We push it out long enough so we have an opportunity to get the word out there as much as possible. So we could, and the topic for that meeting is going to be around traffic safety enforcement, the policeman, the police department's candidate selection service, and then also about the interaction the police have with the public and the special needs and mental health as it relates to people in the town.
They don't have snow days anymore.
So Police Chief Rich is going to actually give a presentation, and he'll walk through those topics. At the end of the presentation, we'll open it up to to general discussion on those topics. And hopefully, from this next informational meeting that'll take place on the 18th, that'll help drive the next round of discussion. We did have the memorandum of understanding. We did not get a response back in writing from the Mashstecqipiquat Tribal Nation, but they were in concurrence with what we had sent forward, and they were still dealing, reviewing it at the council level. But we've asked the mayor to send something forward to the Mashstecqipiquat Tribal Nation, reiterating our plan of attack, how we're going to move forward based on that memorandum of understanding, even though the tribe has not signed it at this point. I think that's it. We still have to go through the mission statement. Go ahead, Andre.
Councilor Washington, I just want to add that there was a brief email exchange to follow up about the status of their review of the MOU, and we did hear back from Lori Potter that they are reviewing it. And in the meantime, they advise us to go ahead and serve tribal members who qualify, who are Ledgerd residents. So I just want to, I want to be clear about that verbal guidance because it is, it is a shift from verbal guidance that we received several years ago. So I just want to throw that out there.
Thank you, Councilor. And it's actually very timely because with the holiday coming up and the holiday baskets and everything, it'll just make it a lot of things easier for everybody involved. And I think there was... And I think that was it for the bulk of the meeting. We have, we're still working on the mission statement, but the whole goal here is to get more involvement with people from the town. That's my report.
Thank you. Finance?
Finance met last week. We removed the motion from the table and then withdrew it that was to grant a bid waiver to CGIS mapping because the town planner is now in the process of getting two more bids. We continued our discussion on the VAT and the request for tax abatement. We continue to struggle both with the slippery slope of a tax abatement for COVID as well as for a project that asked for an abatement after they were up and running and in business because of the concern of the number of other businesses that have opened in town and did not ask for a tax abatement. We fear the setting of precedent of opening your business and then receiving a tax abatement could cause anyone now or in the future to do that. We did not move on the ordinance for property for tax exemption for ag. And we we talked a little bit about the Ledgerd Housing Authority requests for reduction in their pilot, but we took no action because we received extremely good news that the Connecticut Housing Finance Authority has extended an offer for a much larger grant to the tune of a million. And then I think I recently saw an email about even more than that, that they would set up a million-dollar grant to do improvements on the housing authority property. The mayor was to have a conference call with them the following day, so we took no action on that. And we're waiting for the, for the final update on that, but it's really exciting. We're thrilled that, you know, our little attempt to help out the housing authority has turned into a huge attempt by Connecticut Housing Finance Authority. I think they got it, that the facility needs some investment that it didn't get all these years, and they're going to give them some much-needed help. So really good news, and that's all we had.
Thank you. Any questions, finance? Land use?
Land use has not met, so I have no report.
Any other reports, committees? Liaison reports? Any liaison reports?
I attended the Agricultural Committee meeting the other night, or last week, I should say, and they have gone through in their agenda. They had all of the different things that the ordinance spelled out for them to go look at, and they actually assigned action to members of the committee to go look forward to investigate to figure out how to move forward with that, with those actions. One thing I do have to mention is Bill, they'll probably be receiving a request from the ag committee for finance to set up an account for them to put the funds into that the ordinance allows. I'm not sure if we had done that yet or not.
Any other liaison, whoops? Any other liaison reports?
I have WPCA.
Yes.
Okay, so past receivables, WPCA met last night, and their past due receivables are inching up. They're up to $18,000 or 11%, so they're paying very close attention to that. No shut-off notices have been issued for non-payment, and 130 letters have been sent out to late payers asking them to contact the office to arrange for a payment plan. So overall, receivables are starting to become a concern. Groton Utilities has been conducting a comprehensive leak detection survey, and they actually found a leak on the Route 117 water main. A leak occurred because of improper installation of that main. They found the pipe did not have sand around it. There were some rocks actually pushing on the pipe, and then pipe joints were not pushed in all the way and had some bad angles, and they corrected one because it was leaking. So that's really bad news for a 10-year-old or 15-year-old water main. So the concern was that this job was supervised by the former engineering company that we've had at least one other problem with. And speaking for myself, I think we're very fortunate to have Groton Utilities overseeing our system. That was disturbing news. Also, there was a third incident with cross-connection inspections where a customer confronted the Groton Utility technician in a threatening manner. They almost called Ledgerd Police, but since there were two Groton Utility representatives present, they were able to resolve the situation. But this really isn't fair that people treat Groton Utilities employees this way. And finally, this Squad Chairman, Southeastern Connecticut Water Authority Squad Chairman's report indicated they installed a pressure-reducing valve on the interconnection between the Ledgerd Division and the Gray Farms Division. And the reason they're doing that is they need to take the Gray Farms Division offline so they can do an upgrade of their equipment. But what they're doing is gearing the interconnection between Ledgerd Water System, the Ledgerd Center Water System that Squad operates, and the Gray Farms to supply water to Gray Farms, literally from, from using these interconnections that were just required to be installed by the state. So Groton Utilities is going to look into whether that was the original intention of the interconnection, and we'll have more news on that. And lastly, WPCA is putting together a request for quotes for an engineering study to look at sewer connections from Ledgerd Center to the Highlands Plant, and that park queue is under development, and they will have more information about it next week. That's my report.
Thank you. Any other reports? I attended the organizational meeting of the Social Services and Youth Services Committee. That's the new commission. Lisa Doocy was elected chairman, and it seems like a really good group. So I look forward to seeing what they can do. And we have a young man on the, I don't know how old he is. He must be like 16, 17 years old. It's kind of nice to see a young face, so. Other than that, any other liaisons? Hearing none. The mayor is not here. You do have his report. I can do a couple of highlights. And just that, let's see, COVID total cases in Ledgerd are up now to 106. However, we're in the yellow zone, which was down from the orange zone. So that's good news because multiple adjacent towns are in the red zone. The drive-through testing at, by Ledgerd, by, at the Ledgerd Middle School by Ledge Light, 481 people were tested. Our drought is down somewhat, so our drought level is down to D2, which is still severe drought, but it's, the rain is helping a bit. We're still waiting on the steep grant. And you talked, Bill talked about the CHFA good news. And as far as election, 2,400 ballots have been received as of October 26th, with 3,600 ballots outstanding. And the Don Greasy Sports Complex sign was unveiled today, and Don was here with his wife. Councilor McGrattan was there, and guests and former coworkers. And that is the mayor's report. I would say any questions to the mayor, but if you have any questions, you can email the mayor. There is no old business. Would anyone like to amend the agenda under new business? Hearing none. Admin? You have to unmute, Mary. There you go.
Okay. I make a motion to appoint Timothy Ryan, Republican, 62, Inch Cliff, Drive Gales Ferry, as an alternate member of planning and zoning for a three-year term ending November the 2nd, 2022, to fill a vacancy left by Mr. Disco.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? Roxanne, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Malone?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Sebelia?
Abstain.
Seven in favor, one abstention.
Motion carries. Next item?
Okay, I make a motion to revisit the following item as acted on at the town council's October 14th, 2020 meeting. I move to appoint Mr. Tony Kapon. No, wait, that's, okay. The motion was to appoint Mr. Tony Kapon, Democrat, 27, Silas Dean Road, Ledgerd, as an alternate member to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a three-year term ending December 31st, 2023, to fill a vacancy left by Mrs. Scanlon.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. This is just a vote to revisit, to revisit the motion, and then the next item is the motion. Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Malone?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Sebelia?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed?
Motion carries. Next item?
I make a motion to appoint Tony Kapon, Democrat, 27, Silas Dean Road, Ledgerd, as an alternate member to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a three-year term ending December 31st, 2023, to fill a vacancy left by Ms. Scanlon.
Second.
Discussion. Roxanne, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Dombrowski?
No.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Malone?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Sebelia?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Seven in favor, one opposed?
Motion carries. Next item?
Okay, I make a motion to adopt proposed amendments to ordinance number 300-011, an ordinance providing for the term of office and appointment of the zoning board of appeals and establishing a fee schedule for the and establishing a fee schedule for the town of Ledger as contained in the draft dated June 10th, 2020.
Second.
Okay, this amendment to this ordinance just establishes an appendix and a fee schedule. The fee schedule shall be determined to reasonably defray the municipal costs of administering the State of Connecticut general statutes and the zoning regulations and publishing the public hearings and decisions of the zoning board of appeals and shall be reviewed annually by the zoning official or other municipal agent with the approval of the zoning board of appeals and the town council. Be amended if deemed necessary or desirable by the official and the board. And the copy of these fees are in the town clerk's office.
Any discussion? Roxian, would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Ingles?
Yes.
Mr. Malone?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Sebelia?
Yes.
Mr. Sam?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed?
Next item?
Linda?
Yes.
I forgot to mention that at our meeting, we had Nate Woody and we discussed this ad hoc committee that he wants to, that we should, we want to establish so that he can do some zoning regulations concerning agricultural uses in the town. So I'd like to put that on for next, next council's agenda.
Yes, it will be. Thank you.
Okay, that's all.
That's the Steve Eichelberg rule. Do you all know the Steve Eichelberg rule? So Kevin knows it. So when Steve Eichelberg, Chair of Admin, he wanted to meet the same night as the town council. And after a few glitches, I said to him, if you're gonna meet the same night as town council, you're not bringing us things that we have not seen until five minutes before the meeting. Unless it's a routine thing, it sits. So it's fine. It's just, just always remember our friend Steve when you see why something gets delayed going on the agenda. Okay, next item, Mary. Whoops.
No, I'm done.
You're done. Oh, it's just, there's so much on this page. Okay. And so we are done. See, the, the meeting itself, no, we're not done.
No, we have one more.
We got one.
Finance.
Whose is that?
The finance.
I'm sorry, whose agenda item is that?
Finance.
No.
There it is. That's why there's so much on the page. Okay, Bill, take it away.
I move to recommend the town council approve the following land use fees. Appendix dash ordinance 300-008 and ordinance establishing planning and zoning fees for subdivision, new construction alteration, change of use and zoning permit application in the town of Ledger as contained in the draft dated September 29th, 2020. And Appendix A Ordinance 300-013 ordinance establishing inland wetlands and watercourses commission and providing a fee structure for applications as contained in the draft dated October 6th, 2020. And Appendix Ordinance 300-011 and ordinance providing for the term of office and method of election or appointment of zoning board of appeals and establishing a fee schedule for the town of Ledger as contained in the draft dated September 29th, 2020. Excuse me. In addition, recommend the town council acknowledge revision to Appendix Ordinance 300-003, town of Ledger permit fee and inspection fee schedule for building as presented in the draft dated September 29th, 2020.
Thank you. Just, any discussion?
Wait, we need a second.
Councilor Malone, second.
Okay.
So as, as we mentioned at the town meeting and Kevin clarified, this is the change not only to the land use fees but to the ordinances themselves to put the fees in the, in the appendices and specifically with zoning board of appeals to post their fees in the ordinance.
Thank you.
Again, in the appendix.
Yes. Roxian, any questions? Roxian, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Malone?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Sebelia?
Yes.
Mr. Sam?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingles?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed?
Motion carries and that is the final item. Everybody have a great Halloween in your neighborhood. I, I think it's funny how people ask if, several people ask if we were gonna cancel Halloween, which I thought was interesting. Halloween is going forward. Our neighborhood is looking forward to it with tables at the end of the driveway and little individual snacks on each, on the table. And also, if you haven't voted yet, I will see you on election day, perhaps. And that's it for me. Anybody else have anything for the good of the cause? Hearing none. Entertain a motion to adjourn, Mr. Dombrowski?
Motion to adjourn.
And motion's been made and seconded. Somebody?
I'll second.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. This meeting is adjourned without exception. Thanks for your patience, everybody. It was a unique experience.
Thanks.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.